Well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the New Bern Board of Alderman meeting at this time of night. One very important thing to do is offer prayer. Before we do Alderman Bingle, did you have something?
Yes. I would, I would ask that if everybody here, everybody that's listening to us on live stream, if you would please, please remember Juliette Rogers and her family as they grieve for the loss of their son very tragically this week. And so, please just pray for understanding and just pray for the strength of this family. So, I just ask that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask Reverend Robert Johnson if he would to come up and give our prayer with Ebenezer Presbyterian Church.
You know, Reverend Johnson, for those just who don't know, Juliette Rogers is the Director of RCS for people who may not recognize the name, but...
Oh, Julia Roj.
Yes, her, her son.
Her son. Oh, Serbia.
Died this week, so we really want to remember them. Thank you.
Definitely. Appreciate that. Shall we bow our heads? In this quietness, in the peace of this moment, our heavenly Father, we come before you as your children, that you have made in your image to be your mouthpiece, your hands, your ears, and your feet. And we just count it worthy to be blessed by you, to serve you in this capacity. So, Lord, we ask your comfort will be upon our dearly beloved, the Chairman of the Religious Communities Service, Julia, Julia. And at this time, dear God, you comfort her with the peace and the console that she needs to go through this tragedy. And let her know, dear God, that she can lean and depend on you, that although that she may not understand, but you understand and you know the ins and the outs, and that her beloved, we trust in your care and this entire family. So, Lord, we thank you that we can bow in prayer for our beloved. Now, Lord, we ask your blessing upon this important meeting of our City Council and the Mayor and these wonderful citizens that have come together to listen and to present decisions that we hope will be made in your honor for the good of this entire city. So, we invite you to have your way in each one of us as we deliberate and as we listen and as we attempt to make the right decision for the, for you and for this great community. So, we thank you for being present with us at all times. And after we leave here tonight, we go to God more committed to make our city a safe and a blessed community for all your people in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you go with the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Matt, first, call the roll.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris, present. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Bass, present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, Vice President. At this time, we have consent agenda.
May I make a motion we approve the consent agenda?
Motion by Alderman, Odom seconded by Alderman Harris is a fur of discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, the same. Before we get into the rest of the agenda, does anybody have any changes that need to be made at this time concerning the agenda?
Just want to be aware that we're holding a closed session tonight for personnel. I didn't even know if you were already told.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, I have several things, just real quick.
Yes.
Item number six was our presentation on the North Carolina Global Transcar. Mr. Thomas contacted us earlier today as we're under the weather and was unable to attend, so he would like to reschedule that if possible. And additionally, items eight and nine, we need to hold those till the next meeting to perform those public hearings. We want to ensure that we have met all the needs for public notice. There was some specificity that needs to happen with regards to the way the notice was written, so we're going to re-notice that just to, just to dot our i's and crop our t's on that.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I understand that I have some constituents here that would like to speak. So, Mr. McGovern, I know you were here. Did you want to speak this evening? Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion that we allow Mr. McGovern, just Mr. McGovern, to speak this evening, and then if Ms. Harakel's here from Sis' Fair, she would be able to speak as well.
Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Kinsey. Is there a discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, the same.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. What I'd like to talk about is...
Just, you have to give your name and address for our record, if you don't mind.
Ed McGovern, 520 South Front Street, New Bern, North Carolina. I represent Tryon Palace Seafood Stingray Cafe. It came about with the two-hour parking and the loading zone issue. I think the two-hour parking down on 500 block has been taken care of because I don't, I don't belong to part of the downtown. The loading zone issue, we've had for 45 years. It's been in our family business. We've had that for unloading and loading fish. I have, currently, I have six commercial fishermen, counting myself, four bill nutters and two crabbers. And when they come up to the fish market up there now, they're scared to come up there because of, if it takes more than three or four hours to unload their catch, they're worried about getting a ticket, which I said I would take care of that until we can resolve this issue. But, you know, when we come up there and just like, I got a, I'm a contractor too, so I either have either my boat or my construction trailer with me. And the only part we have to park at is in front of my business. I don't have anything on the side. I don't own any property other than what's in front of me on the footprint of the building. And when we go try to get to the building, I can't even pull my boat up there. I got to park in the middle of the street. And if we have to unload fish or whatever, sometimes it takes two to four hours, sometimes five hours, just depending on what we catch. Sometimes we do that at night, sometimes it's during the day. But if it's during the day, the city has moved the loading zone across the street from a, what used to be where Barbara Boatworks used to have their main gate at. And I think that was probably in their ordinance in the beginning. They tell me mine wasn't, but we've, still, we've had it there. There was a sign there for 45 years. And up until 2007, the hash marks out there were all painted white. They weren't yellow like they are now. In fact, my dad, back in the 80s and 90s, bought the city the paint, to paint those, you know, because back then, the city didn't have much money. And, you know, I went to the, you know, the, whoever was in charge of the city at the time to ask them about getting that done. And, you know, they didn't have it in their budget or whatever, so my dad volunteered to buy the paint, which they did, and they came out and painted out the, in front of the business out there. But now, it's causing a hardship on me because if I lose one fisherman, and because of the type of business I have, because of the fish market, the tourists come for that, and the restaurant, where we, you know, we sell those fish in the restaurant. That's all fresh seafood, North Carolina seafood. And we can't afford to lose any more fishermen. And, you know, right now, you know, even just to lose one of them would cost me thousands of dollars, you know, and, and, and try to replace them, I couldn't do it. You know, so I really need that loading zone put back in place and able to get to my business when I need to. And if the Board can find some way to do that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't think it's, 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 you speak Lindy. You have anything else to say? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Very well, thank you.
At this time, we're going to go to item number seven, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Ford. Tonight, we have a presentation by the Housing Authority of the City of New Bern on a proposed offer to purchase a piece of property that's owned by the city at 703 Carolina Avenue. At this time, I'm going to ask the Director, Marty Blaney, to come up and prepare his presentation for you and what their vision and goal would be as far as the property of 703 Carolina Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Anderson. I am the Chair of the Housing Authority of New Bern. I will be introducing Mr. Blaney. He needs no introduction, but I'll just ask him to stand there for a moment. I'm going to make one or two minutes of brief remarks, and then I'm probably going to leave because I'm getting over a bit of a cold. There's no sense in me staying here passing germs around. And I'm very confident in the team that we have with us here tonight, with the folks, the residents of Trent Court. Just let me see who you are. Thank you. As we present tonight, Mr. Blaney and the other team members, I just want to make three cup, three brief points. One, I fully support what we're trying to achieve by purchasing a property at Carolina Avenue. I think it will add socio-economic benefit to all parties involved. But we also know that whenever you make change, there's some hardships that will happen. There will be some grievances. There will be some pros and cons. We are not here to entertain conflict. We're not wrestling against flesh and blood. Heard a wonderful prayer a little while ago. Work under that covering. We just want to collaborate with the city to have the best outcome possible for the citizens of New Bern and, of course, the residents of Trent Court. And that's basically all I have to say. I know we can get it done. We've got a strong team. I fully endorse and support what you'll hear presented. I'm going to go home and watch it on TV. Turn it over to Mr. Blaney.
Good evening. I'm Marty Blaney. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the City of New Bern, 837 South Front Street. We're here tonight asking to purchase about eight acres of land, city-owned land located at 703 Carolina Avenue. The purpose of this purchase would ultimately, ultimately lead to the transformation of Trent Court. Trent Court is 78 years old. It's what the experts call functionally obsolete. It is increasingly difficult and expensive to maintain, and at the same time, we're confronted with diminishing HUD support. That means HUD dollars. Its current condition cannot be improved, stabilized, let alone sustained. And half of Trent Court is in the floodplain. That means that we, the Housing Authority, cannot rebuild there. And on top of that, there's the annual threat of hurricanes. Will it be this year? Next year? I don't know. But the big one comes, and it will. What are we going to do? In 2014, in cooperation with the city, we were fortunate to receive a Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grant from HUD. The result of that effort is the Greater Five Points Transformation Plan. I'm sure all of you are familiar with it. It was made possible through the work of several governmental entities, religious entities, for-profit, not-for-profit organizations, and hundreds of dedicated citizens. Here's a list, just a partial list of some of the stakeholders that were, that took part in that effort and agreed on this transformation plan. The revitalization of Craven Terrace and Trent Court were the plan's centerpiece. Craven Terrace has been revitalized. It's completed. The request we bring before you tonight is a vital step toward revitalization of Trent Court. We want a Trent Court that would complement and enhance the surrounding neighborhoods, including Tryon Palace, downtown, Pollock Street, and the Walk Bell corridors. We want a Trent Court that's diverse, comprised of condominiums, market-rate apartments, workforce housing, loft apartments, and maybe even retail. We want a Trent Court with new sightlines from Pollock Street straight down to the river's edge. We want a Trent Court with public access to the Riverwalk with above rate, buffering green space. But in order to achieve that, we must develop new property to house our existing residents. 703 Carolina Avenue satisfies all North Carolina Housing Finance Agency eligibility and competitive criteria. We believe it's the most competitive site we visit. And, of course, we need to satisfy the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency because financing would be through them. You know, this site at 703 Carolina Avenue is relatively remote, but it's with, it's within walking distance to goods and services. In fact, its seclusion originally, we thought, was one of the foremost attractions of the site. It is in the same ward, too, as the Pembroke community, but it's far, far away, separated by thick woods and the lake. Trent Court residents were a vital contributing element of the transformation plan. They helped write the book. In fact, this book, in this effort, would not be possible, wouldn't have gotten this far had it not been for their input and their cooperation. Nobody, nobody in this room better understands the deficiencies and limitations of Trent Court better than the Trent Court residents. And they endorsed the plan. They understand that they will be relocated, and they support the plan. They vigorously support the Housing Authority and our Board of Commissioners in the purchase of 703 Carolina Avenue for its construction of approximately 80 units of affordable housing. Now, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Mark Straub. He represents our development partner, Penrose Properties, and he'll be followed, I believe, by Mr. Sherrod Banks, our Development Counsel, who will be by closing remarks. Thank you, Mr. Straub.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this exciting effort. I'm Mark Straub with Penrose Properties. I'm the Regional Vice President. I'm 1412 Woodway Drive, Udoa, Tennessee. That's my home base. Penrose is a very large firm, and we are partnered with Mosaic Development Group. This is Jimmy Royster. And Jimmy and I will tag-team on this presentation. Penrose is about bricks and mortar, but also about heart and soul. We look at the community redevelopment as a key focus as part of each of our developments. So, as we're looking at development, we're trying to make sure what we do transforms, helps the community in its overall desires to make improvements in the community. As you can see, we're a nationally acclaimed real estate developer. We are a large-scale developer. We've done all kinds of both market rate, mixed income, mixed use, retail, and other homeownership development throughout the East Coast. And we are recognized for complex deals. We don't typically come in and develop a single development. We're looking at developing communities, major redevelopment efforts, such as Hope Six's Choice Neighborhoods and large-scale redevelopment efforts. Here's some numbers. I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but it gives you a feel for the scope of development that Penrose is involved in as a company. We've been involved in affordable and various development activities for the last 40 years. Jimmy?
Like Mark said, I'm Jimmy Royster with Mosaic Development Group. We're a North Carolina-based nonprofit affordable housing developer. We have over 50 years' experience. We have apartments all across North Carolina, large communities and small. We primarily through the 9%. Lytec is how we do development. That's our involvement in this project, is bringing that familiarity and relationships with the state. We have been serving New Bern for over 15 years with our Weatherstone Apartments, Senior Housing, and we continue to be committed to New Bern and long-term owners in that property. We have a track where we're providing high-quality, affordable housing that looks good day one and forever on. And so, that's, that's committed here. This is just an example of one of our properties. This is downtown Charlotte. This is senior apartments in the Cherry neighborhood, lots of pressure on that neighborhood for redevelopment. Those are $600,000 homes that were built after our property is built, so folks in terms of, well, what's it going to look like? Will it be attractive? Will it continue investment? The tax rate program is, is very high-quality product, day one and throughout the life of it.
Can give you some examples of Penrose development. We don't just do standard affordable housing or even standard market rate. Here's an example of in New Brunswick, a performing arts center, mixed in with retail components, various community activities and features. There, along with housing, market-rate housing and affordable housing mixed in. Also, in New Brunswick is a center, this is tied into Rutgers, where we're providing housing into the community along with retail. There's fitness centers, activities, swimming pool, all kinds of features in this development in New Brunswick. Here is a area close to my home, back in my original home in Cleveland, Ohio, a development that I used to work with, 111 units that is more of an urban setting. You kind of get the urban feel of that development. Here's a development, Alexander Hamilton, in Patterson, New Jersey. More of a townhouse structure. You get a feel for different styles. We try to fit into the styles and the fit of the community in our developments, with high-quality development. Here's Trenton, another example, in Rush Crossing, of more of a, a denser population of housing, but still a kind of a townhouse feel into that community. Here's Annapolis, Maryland, development, 174 units that we developed in multiple phases. And here's one I'm near and dear to my heart in Griffin, Georgia. It's the Oaks at Park Point. This is a multi-phase development. This was the first phase. This was a national award winner, Charles Edson Award for Tax Credit Excellence in Griffin, and tied to demolition of an existing public housing site and multiple developments thereafter, including both on- and off-site development. And this is a city that's similarly sized to New Bern. And then, in Jersey City, New Jersey, here's a more urban environment, more urban-style development that we've developed with 130 units. And now, a bit more about the specific site. Here is the Carolina site. Marty mentioned earlier that it's somewhat, you know, secluded. What's a nice feature about it is surrounded by woods and, and wetlands, even though that particular parcel's not in the wetlands. You have the likeness thereby that kind of sits and creates a nice privacy amongst, in that area. Yet, it's very close to other features and amenities. Here's the proximity of the overall city property to downtown New Bern to give you a feel for the general location. And from a proximity, it gives you a feel for what the distance is, you know, to get into town. It's only really about seven minutes. In fact, from a drive, you could get to Pembroke in about seven minutes with a seven-minute drive as well. But walking distance is a bit more of a challenge. It's almost an hour to get, you know, downtown or, or to Pembroke from that location if you're walking. So, it's not really accessible from a walking feature to downtown or anything, but very handy from a drive. Tax credit process, Jimmy?
The, the prime way affordable housing is built across the US, that, you know, public housing is not, you know, this is not what this is. This is, this tax rate finance is, you know, all across the US. So, applications go into North Carolina Housing Finance Agency in January. So, for the Housing Authority to be able to move forward, they have to have site control prior to January to be able to submit their application. There's a separate, second application that happens in May, and the state makes their selections in the summer, normally around, around August. Then it takes, combining all the layers of financing, if we're lucky enough to be awarded financing, that you move forward in 2020 and look in construction pleasing 2021. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's an involved process, and there's more, more projects submitted than there are awards. So, every community, every developer has to put in their best foot forward because there's, there's, there's a lot of competition. There's a lot of really good, good projects, a lot of, like, good, you know, need across the state. And the state boards points based on proximity to amenities and a whole other slew of things. This site meets all those points, and so will a lot of other projects across the state. Each year, more and more applications are going in. So, for, for, to win, you need to look at, it's very likely there will be multiple projects that score a perfect score. And to win, the next tiebreaker is in the state is census tract poverty rate. In terms of tracts that are large enough to do as projects of this size, that's not in a floodplain, that meet all the distances to amenities, this has one of the lowest poverty rates and very low for the entire region, 5.6, in terms of the amount of poverty rate for this region. So, it would actually score very competitively in the state. I've scored all the eastern region that were submitted in the 2018 round. This would have been the fourth lowest poverty rate in very, very competitive that's been submitted in 2018. So, you know, coming, coming forward that what land is available, what is buildable, and being competitive, this touches on all of those.
And somehow, I got out of the presentation mode. Okay. I'm, I'm just going to deal with the, as it is. But regarding the approach benefits, is the tax credit, low-income housing tax credits are key to affordable housing development? Thank you. It's extremely difficult to build affordable housing without these low-income housing tax credits, nearly impossible. We have sought different funding sources from different other opportunities. Occasionally, you can get a very large grant from a source, but those are the rare circumstances. You need some major Choice Neighborhoods grant to be able to get it without 9% low-income housing tax credit awards. It does allow for redevelopment, the first phase of off-site housing, and provides the opportunity to begin the Trent Court redevelopment. And that's kind of a key. This will allow for the other development to happen, the Trent Court. It's got good proximity to services, allows for mixed income of, of workers and families, and this is workforce housing. This is, you know, the restaurant workers, teachers, policemen. I mean, this is, this is meant to be for average Joe, if you will. And it utilizes difficult-to-develop land. Other considerations, the team, we, we investigated many different methods of financing, and it was, the 9% is the most valuable opportunity. We also investigated a variety of different scattered sites. In fact, we spent many months looking at different sites with city support, looking at different opportunities throughout the area for scattered sites to try and see if we can make it work. And, and one of the big challenges is, one is, the QAP doesn't really allow for, unless you have them all contiguous. So, they have to be all grouped together, these scattered sites. Otherwise, it's virtually impossible to develop that type of scattered site development in, in a common tax credit program. And then, our goal is and have, you know, have... in a common tax credit program. And then, our goal is, and have, you know, has been, is to create a mixed-income development that has a market-rate style. It looks like a market-rate style, but provides for the affordable housing component, workforce housing, and through that spur additional development in the area, in the community. And I just want to thank you again for the opportunity, and I'm going to turn it over to Sharad Banks to finish up here. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Sharad Banks. I am outside legal counsel for the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority's general counsel, as you know, is Warden Smith, and we've hired, been hired a special counsel for this redevelopment effort. So, I'd like to deal with some common misconceptions about affordable housing, the type of affordable housing we're developing here. First question is, you know, who's going to live there? For tax credit housing, as Mark just said, we're talking about people who are at sixty percent of the area median income, or fifty percent, forty percent. That's generally who lives in tax credit housing. We can't go above sixty percent, because that's the program. Sixty percent of the area median income in Craven County is thirty-six thousand dollars. We're talking about, as Mark said, just your regular, average, great citizen of New Bern who lives there. The tax credit program is not public housing. It's not public housing. Public housing is housing of last resort. And so, in public housing, you have lots of families who are not working and who are not earning at sixty percent of the area median income. They may be much lower than that, thirty or even less, and there's sometimes no income at all. So, that is one misconception that I want to deal with. Now, one of the things that always comes up in a discussion like this is crime, crime statistics. I think HUD understood, maybe in the mid-nineties, it admitted that it had made a mistake in creating these large, large superblocks of public housing, having a very, very high density, high number of people concentrated at low income on an acreage. And so, HUD began a program of mixed finance to develop mixed-income neighborhoods. And it's happening all over the country. It's happening all over the state of North Carolina. I've had the pleasure of working with some very, very successful demolition of public housing sites and redevelopment of mixed-income sites in various cities across the state. HUD understood, we understand, that when you concentrate that many people on a site with very low resources, they become targets of crime. And so, we know, those of us who work in the industry, that the people who live in public housing are not the criminals, but people prey on people who live there. Be that as it may, what we're looking to do at Carolina Avenue is not public housing. It's tax credit housing, sixty percent, fifty percent, forty percent of the area median income. There are lots of studies that show that tax credit housing does not produce a lot of crime. In fact, the crime statistics are very low. I could cite you studies, I could hand some up, but there are lots and lots of studies out there. You may be familiar with some. But just to cite a few statistics from right here in New Bern. Ashley Park is a family tax credit development, the type that we are intending to develop here on Carolina Avenue. Seventy-two units. It's relative than you. Obviously, you don't know me, because I'm from Durham, North Carolina, but I came early, I drove the site, I talked to some of the residents there. I know it's been there for maybe three years or so. In two thousand seventeen, there were, there was only one incident report from the police department at Ashley Park. Twenty eighteen, so far, from January one to the end of June, one incident report with the police department. Camden Square, it's a seventy-six unit development. Looks like it's been there a little longer. Twenty seventeen, there were only twelve incident reports at Camden Square, twelve, in all of twenty seventeen. And so far, in twenty eighteen, through the end of June, two. This is not unusual for Lytech, that's low-income housing tax credits, or as I call it, tax credit developments. And there's good reason for that. There's good reason for that. These developments, compared to public housing, are much less dense. There are two hundred and eighteen units right there at Trent Court. We're talking about developing eighty units. The regulations that are involved in dealing with problem households in public housing, I'm an attorney, I can tell you the regulations are onerous. And so, if you need to move a family, it takes a while, okay? Lytech units are not owned primarily even by public bodies like housing authorities. Private developers develop the vast majority of tax credit units, and I can tell you that it is much, much easier to deal with problem households in Lytech units. Who lives there? How do you deal with problem households? All these things lend to lower crime statistics. New Bern has, I went to the website for the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and I took a look, and it appears that there have been twelve tax credit developments awarded for New Bern. More, of course, for the entire county, but twelve awarded for New Bern. I'm not from here, but I did drive through Pembroke today. I didn't see a Lytech property there, which means that other communities in New Bern are accepting these exceptional developments that meet this particular market niche. Workforce housing is needed. These families do not bring crime. The property management that is allowed at workforce housing is the same property management thus allowed at market-rate housing. We would ask the Board to look favorably upon the Housing Authority's proposal to purchase this site. We have a dynamic redevelopment plan for Trent Court. I know it was developed in consultation with this body. Residents stand ready to go. We need your support. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor, let me ask you a question, please, sir. You gave us a lot of stats on different neighborhoods, but you did not give us any stats for the Trent Court neighborhood. Do you have those available?
Yes, sir. In Trent Court, in the year twenty seventeen, there were fifty-six incident reports. And in Trent Court, so far in the year twenty eighteen, there have been twenty incident reports. I also, well...
Sir, when you say it's incident reports, now, what is the majority of those reports? Is it for break of an entering? Is it for...?
It's sort of a hodgepodge. So, there are calls to the police department. Police department comes out, and they write up a report. Not all of these leads to charges, but these are, but it's at least at that level.
You were going to say something else?
I thought better of it.
Yes, go ahead.
Sir?
Yes, ma'am.
You're asking for eight acres of land?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's going to take eight acres of land to build those eighty units?
I believe so.
So, then, you're saying that you'll only be putting eighty units on that property?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you're saying to us, then, that only eighty units from the Trent Court Housing Authority right now will be coming to the Pembroke area? And later on, in the future, you're not going to come back and ask to purchase more land to put more units?
So, I'm going to answer that question, but I'm going to let the developer get up and talk about the entire development plan. So, it is my understanding, subject to correction by the developer, okay, that, you know, we need to have, we're taking affordable units offline in New Bern. And so, we need to replace those units. And so, the answer to your question is yes, in that eighty units at this particular site, but I believe we're taking many, many more units offline. So, I believe that the development team is looking for additional land to do additional developments to replace the units that will be coming offline. Not all of the Trent Court residents will probably return to Trent Court. Many of them will, not all of them will. Some of them will go to these Lytech developments and decide to stay there, okay? So, that's the short answer, but that's subject to correction by the developer.
Mr. Banks, before you do that, I have another question along that same line. We quoted some statistics about the thirty-four, or forty, fifty, sixty percent of the median income would reside in Lytech. So, I'm not sure what that number is. I know that the majority of rents paid in Trent Court are three hundred dollars and below.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that, with thirty-six thousand as your general area, is that what you're saying? Sixty percent of that, or are, I was confused with that number. It would seem that many of the Trent Court residents would not qualify for this Lytech property.
Yeah, so, Lytech developments, by law, can house families earning up to sixty percent of the area median income, okay? I'm going to start there. And then, you can go lower, okay? Some families could qualify for a subsidy, like a Section Eight subsidy. By law, you cannot discriminate against Section Eight voucher holders if you're doing a Lytech project, okay? But the plan is not to have any more than, say, twenty-five percent of the project being available for Section Eight voucher holders. So, the Section Eight voucher holder is a person who, whose income can be at the lower end of the scale and still afford to live there. Does that answer your question?
I'm confused, because the people here have rents that they can pay. My concern is that they're going to move to a place, they're not on Section Eight now, so are...
They have a public housing subsidy.
Subsidy, but that's nothing they're concerned with. They don't have to apply for that. They get that subsidy, they have their rent, their fixed rent that they pay every month that includes their utility. I'm concerned about where that extra comes in. Will that number increase for the people from Trent Court? Will they have to pay more? That is my concern in listening to your presentation now, is that the Lytech is great, and you're talking about market, I mean, working class and, you know, affordable housing. I'm just concerned with the residents that, you know, being able to pay what they can pay. I want to make sure that that is, we totally understand that that's the case.
Yes, they will still not pay more than...
What they're currently paying.
What they're currently paying. Yes, ma'am. Because the Section Eight subsidy would take place of the public housing subsidy.
Will they have to apply for Section Eight, or would it automatically kick in?
It would automatically kick in if they qualify.
But they have to go through a qualification process?
All residents going to the tax credit development have to go through a qualification process.
So, they don't automatically, because don't they have to go through a process in order to go into public housing? Is that correct?
All residents, whether they go into public housing, Section Eight, Lytech without subsidy, they, everyone applies. Everyone applies. Now, the residents at Trent Court are a special group of people who would have priority in terms of living there.
Alvin Kenji?
No, Alvin and I are pretty much asked the same thing that I was about to ask, so it's been covered. Oh, one other thing. When you said the statistics on crime, I don't know if everyone received the same information that we have received. You only covered one side. You didn't cover what the other side, what the statistics would be on the other side, which would be in Pembroke. You only talked about the statistics over...
I have the statistics for Pembroke in my folder. I can find it if you like.
I like to hear both sides.
Okay.
For the public.
Okay, for Pembroke. I have seventy incident reports from January one, twenty seventeen, through June third, twenty seventeen. I'm sorry, that's for the whole year. Yeah, for the whole year. Sorry about that. And then, for twenty eighteen through six months, twenty.
Thank you.
Well, the Board might be waiting to ask some more questions. I would like, if it's okay, to ask Captain Jones. I have a question of Captain Jones. I think you're pretty good on statistical information. Would you kind of vote him, not necessarily germane to any particular unit, the whole, there are many things that City of New Bern is trying to do for our citizens, and one thing is safety, and not specific to any particular nine percent tax credit apartment building. But if you could explore for a moment statistically in our city, the changes in the safety of Craven Terrace with forty-three cameras and partnership with the City of New Bern Police Department, to where we are now, as far as the safety of those citizens, and also talk about some of these apartment developments that have been discussed, and what methodology, both with the city and your partnering with these developments, how is that affecting statistics on crime?
I can tell you, referring to Craven Terrace, certainly since I've been here, there's been, we've seen a decrease in crime in Craven Terrace. A lot of that, I believe, is due to the partnership we have with the development, as far as the security cameras, things like that. That has been crucial in increasing the security in that particular area. And I'm sorry, what was your question about the other?
The other, we have twelve of these in New Bern. How are they, is the partnership, are all twelve management teams at those places on top of the game as far as their relationship with our police department and the security and safety of the residents?
To my knowledge, yes. Based on what the gentleman mentioned, we have good relationships with all of those teams as far as security and safety, and, I mean, really throughout the city when it comes to that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of Captain Jones?
No.
Thank you for your help there. Anything else from anybody? Yes, sir.
Questions for either counsel or developer. Number one, who will own the land? Who will own the buildings? And who will manage the property? And is there a term on that management contract?
The land would be transferred to the Housing Authority, and they would hold a ground lease to the ownership entity, which we would be the majority owner in that ownership structure. Each of these tax credit deals is a pretty complicated structure to allow... Each of these tax credit deals is a pretty complicated structure to allow for these tax credits to be issued. And, uh, we would have a third-party management under us that would be operating that property. Property, uh, a, a management organization we've worked with for, uh, extended period of time, along with all of our properties in the southeast are managed by this property management firm.
Is there a term, years, or is it in perpetuity?
Uh, the term for us, our management, uh, the term for the management is, is dependent on, I'll say, the success of the, the property, et cetera. But it would continue on and on, uh, the, depending on the structure of the agreements that are provided legally at closing, that would identify any exclusions with the investor or any other terms. But normally, we would continue on unless there's, you know, some type of specific exclusion that's required for the protection of the investor, the owner. They may want the opportunity to say, huh, we want a different property management company to come in if they're not satisfied, those type of things. I can't necessarily say they're guaranteed to be there forever because that's, contractually, that's not the case.
So from an interim date standpoint, there, there's not a point where fifteen years, you reach a milestone, and Penrose says, hey, we, we're no longer interested in the property, and you guys walk away, and then the housing authority is left to manage that? I guess that's more the, along with the question that I'm asking.
Gotcha, uh. Normally, in these structures, and, and there's usually an extended use agreement that keeps us involved, usually between fifteen to twenty years into the deal. The tax credits period baseline is fifteen. It's usually asked to be extended to twenty by most housing finance agencies, at which time, when that expires, though usually the standard approach, and, you know, this being frank, the housing authority usually has the option of, of first refusal to acquire the land, but it has to assume all the debt and all the management responsibilities at that point. And that would be some period down the line.
Thank you.
How, how many of the units would be ADA handicap compliant?
Uh, the minimum, uh, is five percent, and that would meet, meet that as a minimum. Usually, we try to get a goal that's higher, with a higher visibility, uh, percentage. It depends on the structure of the units that are eventually built. I would expect a higher percent of visit, excuse me, visitable units at this site because the grade is not extreme, because it's a fairly fat, flat location. We should be able to get pretty successful visitability, but as far as that, handicap accessible, five percent.
And what, you, you showed us quite, quite a bit of, uh, information up there, but which, which particular design is that, is that been determined yet?
No, it has not. We have not started design because until you have the land, you don't know how to structure it. We've done some preliminary massing plans to assure that we can get the developments on. Goes back to the question about, you know, is eighty the right amount of units? And we believe, one, based on the amount of, uh, tax credits that you can get, you know, and the numbers, that's usually your sweet spot, is about eighty units. And it fits onto that site successfully without a high concentration. What we wouldn't want to do in that environment, especially with as much spaces there is, is to concentrate it too much. That's, we don't want one of those urban settings here at that site. We would want more of a spread-out feel in, in the general feel. So, uh, as, as I mentioned when I was doing the, the design, each site, you kind of have to structure to blend into the community more and make it fit, so it doesn't, it's, so it works. So it works with the community.
Alvin and Ben? Yes. With this, um, Lytec, um, affordable housing development, would, will it have the security cameras on this?
Uh, I, I can almost guarantee you, uh, all of the developments that I've done over the last seven years have all had security cameras throughout the site. It's one of the things that, are they required? No. Most of the times, these are items that are beneficial to the ownership and to the residents for security. And so we do put in security cameras on almost all our developments.
Also, um, have the housing authority or yourself looked at other areas within the city for this type of development?
Yes, we have. We've been looking, uh, we've spent a lot of time looking at different properties, um, with the support of the city. In fact, as we were going through and trying to locate different, uh, possible locations, we made land offers to quite a few different locations, in fact, trying to secure the properties, uh, over the last two years. Last year, we were, uh, actually looking at different alternatives, uh, when this opportunity, potential opportunity came up. And that's when we started that discussion with the city because it is such an attractive location. That's why it seemed to score very well and was very effective without a conflict.
I have a couple of questions, um, just because I'm, I'm also active online. I'm not sure who it would be filtered to, but there is an individual that, um, had a question and wanted to know if there were residents, if the residents of Pembroke weren't invited to any of the original discussions on the location. So that may be a board question, or maybe...
When we were investigating, I, I, I would expect not. That wasn't in any public meeting that we were investigating. We were really searching maps of New Bern, uh, for properties throughout the area that might be feasible. And then trying to map those locations out and seeing whether or not they would work, you know, from a structure for a tax credit deal, whether or not they would score, what kind of, you know, obviously, you know, whether or not it would ultimately mass out to get enough sufficient units into the area. The challenge in New Bern is there's not a lot of large acreage that, that doesn't have a lot of wetlands that's involved with it. That's one of the big challenges.
My second question was just for me to, um, have clarity and understanding that the current residents that live in Trent Court, if this was to move over to the Carolina Ave property that get assistance right now, they would have to go through the process of applying for Section Eight, which is totally different from the subsidies that they get now. Am I correct?
Yes, the subsidies are different. They'd have to go through a whole new, brand-new selection process. That is completely accurate. And a new screening. Absolutely correct.
Starting from scratch.
Exactly.
My question has to do with, um, you know, we heard Mr. Banks talk about twelve, maybe, tax credit properties in New Bern, so that may be roughly six hundred, set, seven hundred units. Currently, there's eighty units under construction that are there. Have these units not been investigated so that we could move some of the housing? They're gonna be ready in January. Now, they are for elderly, we understand, but we could get some residents in there. There's another nine percent tax credit off of Neuse Boulevard that hasn't gotten under construction, but has been approved. Are we not trying to work with that person there to build eighty units? These are already in progress. And do we know that any of these other ones, Camden, any of these other ones, do they have empty units? Can we move? Because I'm concerned, we're talking about a hurricane. We could have a hurricane next month. And you're right, where would these people go? Because HUD is not, I lived through the last hurricane where they were flooded out and the issues and the problems that they had in these units. This time, there is no fix for it. So where would they go? Trailers? And that's the whole key. We don't want that to happen. So if we have units readily available now or available in the next several months, why are we not working with that to ensure that, rather than just keep building and building? I mean, if we have something that we can use, again, the site off of Neuse Boulevard, I'm just not sure. Somebody's getting the nine percent tax credits besides your group. So I'm just curious if that's been looked at, investigated. Are we not working with that?
It, it's a difficult question to answer.
Because it's your, your company's deal is over here. That's the big thing there, I get it.
I, 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 I'm not in the position to give you a, a particularly good answer, I'm sorry. But what I can tell you is traditionally in these scenarios, the housing authority can't really move into a relocation process until they have approval from HUD for demo disposition or trans, you know, transfer of the property. And so, in effect, they're somewhat hand-high from doing any precautionary measures until they have an authen, authorization from HUD. Or if there was an extreme condition, then obviously, we would move forward. I think the goal from the housing authority, and I'm speaking, uh, out of line, is that what they want to do is start the development of replacement housing for these units. They can start the process with HUD and start asking for the demolition and disposition, in my mind, so that you can start that Trent Court redevelopment eventually. We may nev, you know, Penrose itself may never be involved with the actual onsite Trent Court redevelopment. If we are, I would be honored. But on our side, that's not my specific task. My task is to try and assist the housing authority in redeveloping replacement housing for its stock so that it can redevelop the Trent Court site. And so it could be anybody that redevelops Trent Court.
So my last question then, can you guarantee that all eighty units will be Trent Court residents going into those units?
I cannot, because the residents have their own mind of where they would like to live and what they want to do. So there's no guarantee at all who might live in those eighty units.
So it could be people other than Trent Court residents may move into these?
I would expect it would be highly likely that it would be significantly other than Trent Court residents that would move into these units.
I don't think that's fair to them, then. Wow.
Is that the term that you use, affordable homes? Is that the term that you use?
Affordable housing is a term that is, yes, it, it is a...
So that's the reason why they're not guaranteed anything because of the term?
It, it's, it's part of the nature of the structure of mixed-finance affordable housing. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be obtuse at all.
I'm sorry, I'm understanding what I'm hearing.
Yeah, yeah, it's a complicated process. Our goal is not just to develop eighty units. Our goal, because there are so many units that, you know, and so many residents that need to be supported, we need to develop far more so that we don't have a concentration in one location of very poor families. But our goal is to create mixed income in each of larger developments of sites. Our goal would be develop eighty of these units five times. So that, now you're, you're creating a, a, a greater mix into the community, not a concentration of extremely poor in one location. That would be our goal.
I have a quick question and then a comment. Um, the question would be, um, based on certain meetings, it was said that there was another location that was looked at, um, for a possibility. Can you tell me the location or the reason why that's not a Plan B? And then my comment would be, um, is there any material that was presented to the Trent Court individuals based on right of first refusal and that their true understanding of there's a possibility that they may not be able to move into the new eighty units based on income? Or that they go from being helped to now being put on government assistance, Section Eight? I mean, because to me, that's not affordable housing. I don't want anyone, you know, unless it's a nec, necessity to be on Section Eight, I'd rather them to be able to afford to live where they're living and not have to get government assistance. I mean, that's the vision moving forward for everyone, so...
I am in complete agreement with your desire that everybody gets the opportunity to step up and creates the opportunity to move out and to grow and have, improve their well-being and their lives. I am in full support of that, and this program is. And we've had many discussions with the residents about how long this process and how complicated the process is going to be. I know Marty has had many discussions with his residents and residents in the community about this development. I know we've had public hearings and, and discussions about relocation and what the impacts are. I wasn't directly involved in all those, so I can't speak exactly to what was said. But I do know there's been a pretty open forum in general from the involvement that I have been in, from an outsider.
Well, s, what, what would actually happen to a resident that did not qualify to move in? Where, where would this resident go?
That's a great question. What, what'll happen is the residents are gonna have opportunities to relocate through the use of tenant-protection vouchers. What ends up happening, what'll, more information again, so I'm sorry, I'm gonna complicate it a bit more. When the housing authority starts its plan for redevelopment, they're gonna go then to HUD and say, we want to go and apply for demolition disposition of the Trent Court site. That process alone is probably in the nine-months to twelve-month category for HUD to give you an authorization. Just, so you understand, it takes a bit of time for HUD to, to move. With that, though, when they approve it, they will provide tenant-protection vouchers to the residents that are currently occupied at Trent Court. And the tenants will have the opportunity to utilize those vouchers and relocate at their discretion in other locations.
To any location, not necessarily the new one, but any location.
Any location, in fact, any location across the country. They can transfer that voucher to California if they so desire. Okay, so there's no requirement, restriction that they have to live in New Bern. They can move on and take the trap, they call traveling, but it, a tenant-protection voucher allows them the flexibility to move in with their family where somewhere they didn't want to, you know, didn't think they could live, you know, with family in, you know, uh, anywhere USA. So, uh, yes, it, it, as far, now, you know, the goal is to create the opportunity where they have the first priority to live in this other location. So as we develop these units, they'll have a priority. So moving in, they will have a preference, is what it's called. And that preference will allow us, you know, the residents to move into that new development if that's what they would like to do, and we just don't know. They, they are not forced to relocate anywhere.
Alvin and Ben, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Strahb, was appraisal the means that came up with the offer of the two hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, no, the two hundred thousand dollars was trying to find a, I'll say, a middle ground. And again, this is, I, I, I probably shouldn't be, this, this is probably better addressed by Marty.
We felt that the two hundred, two hundred thousand dollar figure was a fair price for a property. The property did come in appraisal a little bit more than that. But if you went through your, um, upset bid process, um, it's assessed at a value that would give a minimum bid of forty-seven thousand dollars. So we thought of more or less a profit of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be a more than a fair price for a property.
So, so just so you know, we, we can set our minimum bid, our standard, we changed it to fifty percent in our last meeting, but we can set a minimum bid, correct, for any parcel of land that we own?
It's just a starting bid, it's not the end number.
Right. My, my second question or comment, I guess, would be for Mr. Ujiri, if, if he could kind of give us his input. I know he's been through this process, through the CNI. He was heavily involved with that. I'd like to get his opinion from the Development Services staff standpoint on his thoughts on the project.
Can I, Mr. Blaney, before, um, Mr. Ujiri comes up, I want to ask you another question. With the, you went out and you selected the Carolina Avenue property. So with looking at that site, have you established where the entrance and exit of that development would be? For its traffic, for its motor vehicle traffic?
It would be off Carolina Avenue, not Trent Road, Carolina Avenue.
No, I mean, the Carolina Avenue property.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, once that development is built, where would the entrance and exits be to that development for traffic?
It'd be Carolina Avenue.
The Carolina Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, because I'd heard that it was gonna be from the Trent Road side.
No.
Well, and that also brings up another question that I have, why, I think Jeff is, if you'd come up, but, um, is there any connect plans for connections, um, to the Pembroke community? Any walking trails, roads, or anything like that from the property?
No.
And, and...
To tell you the truth, uh, uh, Alvin, uh, when we became aware of the Carolina Avenue site, understanding that this will be a multi-phase process where because of the numbers, we'll have to build more than one nine percent tax credit property. We hit on this because we thought it was a, the low-hanging fruit. We thought this was a win-win-win. It's secluded, it's by itself, we should have minimal impact upon anyone else. It's owned by the city. It would be the first step towards ultimate transformation of Trent Court. And we just simply thought it was a win-win-win. We may have been terribly naive, but we thought it was, uh, a great opportunity for us.
Under the new development, I think I was gonna ask this question, but, um, to the other gentleman, but there was, would there be a, lack of better terms, a homeowners' association or a residence association? And so they, and they would have say-so on, um, things that happen at this development? Or once, once they move in and, is there, will there be a residence association?
Presumably, there'd be a, a, hopefully, a very active, uh, resident association. It wouldn't, it would still be run like an apartment complex with a private owner, but you, you know, it's just like our resident council here. At Trent Court, we want to listen to them. It's a good, a vital and vigorous resident association is a good management tool. Good tool for communication, it's a good tool to learn what's going on in your community and what the needs are. And there's no reason why that same subset wouldn't apply over there. Now, the question came up earlier about, you know, reapplying and everything like that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're eligible for public housing assistance, as long as you're lease compliant, as long as you're lease compliant, there should be little problem applying and receiving the subsidy and using that subsidy at the new development. And yes, I guess they could use it elsewhere, but I want these guys, I know these residents. I know them. They would make a great foundation of a new development and a place to grow up and move up. Is that responsible?
Are you able to speak about some of the things that will happen with where Trent Court is now, once it's, you guys transfer over the units?
At a certain point in time, we would go through the arcane procedures, get HUD approvals and all that. But we, we would simply prepare an RFP, a request for proposal for transformation of the Trent Court property. And we would simply ask the market what is best for this community. This is what we want. We need an affordable housing component. We want maintained sightlines from Pollock Street down to the edge. We want to maintain access to Riverwalk with a buffering green space. But beyond that, Mr. Developer or Ms. Developer, you tell us what the best use of this property would be. Then I would imagine the Housing Authority would compile a team to interview and review the applications.
For the other residents?
For redevelopment. Now, that, this is years off, but that's what I presume would have, that's a standard operating procedure. The team would be consistent of perhaps city staff. I don't know if there would be a conflict that would prevent any aldermen from serving on the review team, but it would probably be a team of stakeholders in the community. Maybe Mr. McCray from Tryon Palace, maybe Cheryl Reed from the Residents Association, maybe Twana Smith that lives up on Walt Bellamy Street in Sharon, huh? Maybe some professionals, but that's normally what you would do, would assemble a team to review the applications. And you would select which direction you want to go and then make a presentation back before my board of commissioners.
Mr. Blaney, we have contingency plans here in City of New Bern for a lot of things that might happen. What is your contingency plan if we have flood and those units flood out like they've done past and there's no federal money to fix?
Everything we have right now is preactive. Next month, we'll go through a series of meetings with residents, information in newsletters. We'll do our in-house stuff, just to do, what are we going to do in case it happens?
But if it happens, the money's not there and not going to be there to fix it back again, is that correct?
I don't know. I don't know. It depends on how much damage there is and how much, we do have insurance. We do have flood insurance through FEMA. Just depends on how much money would be forthcoming from that. In all likelihood, I don't believe we could expect any additional funds from HUD. Probably not.
Probably not. Not likely.
Worst-case scenario, if you got eighty units knocked out, if they were contaminated, the electrical lines, et cetera, it's got to be rewired. So are they going to be boarded up and are these residents going to be in trailers or what's going to be, what's going to happen?
Well, I can't address trailers. I don't know how that works. But to me, the worst-case scenario would be we'd end up with eighty folks on the street. I would imagine that HUD would convert them to emergency vouchers. They'd admission, they'd turn emergency vouchers and we'd have maybe twenty boarded up buildings deteriorating.
And to piggyback off that, if that was to happen, God forbid, there's no contingency plan right now regardless because there's no eighty units, there's no applications submitted. So I want to know, like, like Ms. Bangle was saying, if something like that was to happen this hurricane season, is there or has there been conversations or talks with the other developers that already have the 9% tax credit? Because if these individuals get displaced, for them to be in FEMA trailers and not to be able to get refunded, there should be a Plan A, B, and C. And to me, C would be, I'm going to have a conversation with these other developers and see, "Hey, are these already rented out? Is there something where my residents can come over here if this did happen?" Because the way that the plan is, this is like a five-year plan for 2021 before you break ground for them individuals to even be transferred over, what happens in between now and then years? We have hurricanes all the time. God forbid, we don't want anyone to be out on the streets homeless or displaced. But there should have been a Plan C, to me, I felt like, or if you have and you just haven't brought it to our attention, that you were speaking to other people because they could be transitioning now just in case something did happen. And that's kind of one of my main concerns is we were so dead set on this area, what was Plan B? What was the other property or talks with other developers, you know, for the, because at the end of the day, the only thing that matters are the individuals that are going to be displaced. Those are the people that matter. We need to figure out that Plan A, B, and C for them because right now there is no brick and mortar. Regardless if we vote yes or no, there's still no brick and mortar until 2021. And from now to then, anything can happen.
I understand your concern, but here's your four, there's been no plan, no nothing. You have to start somewhere.
Are you not looking into the houses already built on Third Avenue? Some of your residents go there?
I can't speak for the other developers, but generally, help me out here if I'm wrong. But generally, the other developers have their own requirements.
So all 9% tax credits are not the same?
No, but every development, whether it's 9%, 4% market rate luxury or public housing, we want to have full apartments. We want to have occupied apartments. Specifically, even worse so perhaps for 9% because they are under certain obligations to the IRS and to their investors to have full apartments. So it is in their best interest to have as close to 100% occupancy at all times. Under typical situations, they simply would not be able to entertain any emergency housing or anything like that because they, you know, if they have eighty units, they may have a, you know, one vacancy or two vacancies. But they're not going to reserve five vacancies just for us in case there's a hurricane.
Did you not work, yeah, did you not work though with, I believe, at the time, Mrs. Mitchell, when she was your chair and then Alderman, on the property on First Avenue there, or Third Avenue, excuse me, for that housing? That that was going to be additional elderly housing that could transition from Trent Court to that property? I thought that was all in the works together. Is that not the case?
Originally, there was some interest expressed and the board, my board did make a commitment that they would transfer as many Section Eight replacement vouchers from Craven Terrace to them.
But not from Trent Court?
From Craven Terrace because that was the project that was under contract, that was approved for red and was going. Now, what happened, and they had the second, Section 18, which is the part of the HUD rule where they tore down the 42 units up on Cedar Street and Miller Street corner. Now, those 42 units, we could have, we perhaps could have gotten 42 replacement vouchers out of that. They could have, originally, they wanted to give the 42 replacement vouchers to the Gaston Avenue project. However, when the new developer, development team came on site, they decided to relocate all Craven Terrace individuals within Craven Terrace. There was no, there were no families to relocate. No one was displaced. So HUD said, "No, you're not going to get these vouchers because everyone's already relocated within the Craven Terrace development." Therefore, I had nothing to give to Gaston Avenue.
I know, but I'm asking about Trent Court. Why can we not give some of these vouchers to our elderly Trent Court residents to move into very new and nice properties come the first of next year to at least help alleviate some of that concern that somebody might be displaced? That's what I don't understand.
When we, when we apply for the demolition of Trent Court, that's when we may be eligible to receive an allocation of the vouchers, but we could not do it. We would have no basis to go to HUD for, you know, any vouchers now that they could possibly use. Now, we get those vouchers, we will get vouchers, you know, I'm hoping that a lot of people want to come to the new place.
You won't get vouchers when you build 9%?
It's good to know.
Okay, so the vouchers are only based upon demolition and displacement?
Right.
Okay, just want to understand that.
Okay, what I'm trying to understand is that if 9% tax credit and 9% tax credit are under the same guidelines, correct? Right?
Nine, well, yeah, 9% are under the same.
So you have individuals right now in Trent Court that are in not so good conditions and, you know, if something happens, they may be displaced. I'm saying without a voucher system, if they're in affordable housing, when these eighty units are built, why is there not a conversation with the person, the developer, whoever owns that to say, "Okay, I have individuals here that can transfer over here because of the same guidelines and the same stipulations." It's not a voucher system. It's, "I'm applying over here and if they're not full, we should give them priority because these individuals may get displaced or be homeless or suffering if we have another hurricane." I'm not worried about January 2019, August, September. I'm saying if we, if the units are available now, Ashley Park, Candace Square, we have all of this available, why are these individuals not being transferred over to the, to the places that can be filled now?
We have no, we have no vouchers that they could take. We wouldn't have any vouchers until we actually demolished the property.
But it's not about the voucher, I'm saying, so right now, I don't, yeah, I don't.
Could I, could I try to maybe interpret?
So right now, they're not receiving vouchers?
So could, could residents at Trent Court that qualify for a 9% low-income tax credit unit, are they free to leave the New Bern Housing Authority unit right now and apply for the new Gaston Avenue property?
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
If they want to. Okay, they can.
Why, why is, right, so?
But they can't, they can't take any voucher with them, but they can apply.
But they're not on vouchers now.
Excuse me?
They're not receiving vouchers now, correct?
No, but it's, it's just two different subsidy systems. Public housing has their subsidy system, Section Eight, oh, the vouchers have their subsidy system. But they're essentially the same as far as the residents are concerned, but we can't create them.
Right.
We can't create them.
There's no subsidization, subsidization of extra funding that you get with a voucher. So if somebody decided they live in Trent Court and they want to leave and they want to better themselves and go to Gaston Avenue, they can, but they're probably going to be paying more because they're not going to get the additional funding that you get with a voucher.
Like Gaston is 9% tax credit, which is based on the interim stipulations you just gave for the new place.
But Carolina Avenue, you're getting that subsidy because you're demoing the units that they're leaving, correct?
Correct.
Basically, we're sectioning and publicizing.
Mayor, could we, Mr. Ujiri's probably tired of standing, could, I'm interested to hear his thoughts on this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Jeffrey, Jerry, Development Services. I forgot my book tonight, so I wrote some quick notes of what I want to talk about on my phone, so bear with me. Everyone said some great stuff, right? The presentation was awesome. We talked, showed about, everybody knows what Trent Court is now. We saw some pictures from Penrose, I've been working with these guys for two and a half years now. A great developer. We saw what they've done, good stuff. We heard about the crime, right? There's really not much to say about that. Everybody's used the stats. Well, I'll say one thing about that. Throughout the whole CNI process and the Renaissance planning process, I had an opportunity to spend a lot of time in the Trent Court area and I found everyone that I worked with there, the residents, were some of the most caring, nicest people that I've met in the whole, in the whole city. So personally, whatever that's worth, that's what I found when I worked in the Trent Court community. But I really want to talk about the CNI and the CNI process and the Renaissance planning process. That was a long time. Been here six and a half years. I've been working on that since day one, since I got here. I started working on that before I got here. Mike Emerson gave me, he said, "Here, learn this. This is what you're going to do." So it's really one of the reasons why I came here. It's a pretty exciting opportunity to redevelop this old public housing into something new and exciting. So we're six and a half years into it. We really have an opportunity now to do it. So, you know, I've been, met hundreds of people from Craven Terrace and from Trent Court, thousands of hours across the community in meeting and establishing a plan of what the redevelopment should be and what it should look like. And it's a great plan and the boards have approved it and you've all read it. There's, it's a really fabulous plan. So I spent six and a half years here trying to implement those plans along with all the other stuff we're doing in the city. And if you look around, we're doing a great job. There's a lot of great things happening in the city and there's pretty good reason for that. You know, we're, as a city, I found that, you know, where New Bern is, dreamers and we're doers. Dream things up, we get things done, right? Alderman, Bangle, you know what I'm talking about. So this is, this is really an excellent project. There's nothing wrong with this project. This is a fabulous opportunity to improve the entire city, not just Trent Court, not just Walt Bellamy, the whole city. And we are actually in a, in a unique opportunity to make this happen. It'll, it'll change the entire city much like, you know, all the effort that y'all put in in the eighties to get downtown what it is today. It's, I really liken it, it's the same kind of perspective, it's that same vision. It's that 20-year, 30-year, 40-year. We're a 300-year-old city, right? If you don't expect us to be here in another 300 years, then there's no reason to make these decisions. But I do, I will be here and it's, it's important that we take advantage of what's given us now so we can, so we can improve as a city. So everywhere I go, especially at professional conferences lately, people are talking about New Bern and I am not kidding. They tell me how much they love New Bern. And I will tell you as a, as a fact that just the other day, I got a message from a friend of mine I grew up with, met her in sixth grade. And she said, "Hey, do you, do you live in New Bern?" And I said, "Yeah, actually, I work for the city." She said, "Well, my parents are moving down there." She'll be in Alderman Best Ward. And I thought that was neat. Out of the blue, Derry, New Hampshire, little town, much like New Bern, very old, about 30,000 people. Randomly, there's some friends of mine, parents are coming down to retire in New Bern. So I'm sure everyone else has those same experiences. And they asked me really how much, you know, "How do you guys get things done so much?" I mean, from a grants perspective and in the transportation world, I'm getting a little off track, but we have received hundreds of millions of dollars in transportation funds and we are the envy of the transportation community across the state. No one knows why, how we're doing it. And honestly, we just got a great group of people from the NPO all the way up to the state who support what we're trying to do. So that's really getting us on the map there, but we got the Volt Center coming up. Had a pre-construction meeting this morning. That's another game changer. Look down Pollock Street, look down Queen Street, look at the things that are happening. Look at all the developments that is moving down Broad Street, like we talked about six years ago when I got here. Stuff is happening as moving down Broad Street. We tore down the Days Inn Hotel site for a good reason because it was a piece of crap and people are tired of looking at it. So again, this is another example of how we, how we do things. And really, what, really, it's just looking for opportunities. It's a lot of things. People asked me, and this board asked me a few months ago when I stood up here and asked me, "How did you get the Volt?" me, "How did you get the Volt Center done?" And I really don't know how. It started with an idea four or five years ago, as we were looking for ways to move staff around and through the CNI process and what came out of that workforce development, you look for opportunities, right, and you take advantage of them. That's how things get done. This is another opportunity here where the city can partner with a developer to implement a great plan that we have. Again, it's looking for opportunities and get it done. And this is, well, I got ahead of myself, I should've, I wish I had my book, I'm so much better reading when I had my book in front of me. But again, from a overall city perspective, we have fabulous leadership, we have an incredible staff, we have amazing community partners, development side, in the community side, we get things done. I have no reason to believe that this won't be done and it won't look awesome and it won't be a game changer for the city. So as the Director of Development Services, I definitely recommend this project, I've been involved in it since day one. We looked for all the other sites, this was not a, "We're looking at this site," this was the last site that we looked at actually because we didn't put it in, it wasn't in, it wasn't in the pot, it wasn't, it wasn't in the kitty. We were looking at everything else, but nothing else scored as well as this one did. This is a, this is a great place to do a project like this. And, and here we are today. And I guess we're asking to move forward and I would recommend that we do so. Not sure what I said, but I like the project and I've been working on it for a while. And that's it. If I have any questions, I'll answer.
I'll just, I'll make, ask you one question, and I know that you've been really good about this, that, you know, the city, you know, when we all took oath of office, we got, there's a lot of things we're supposed to do, but one thing that I think that the planning department's helped us do is, you know, we have a lot of idle property that we're not doing anything with that is not getting us any tax revenues. And when we look around and can find opportunities to serve our citizens, provide safety and housing, and at the same time bring seven, eight million dollars tax base, very similar to the Gaston Boulevard project, that, that was something that's sitting there. Partnership between a private individual and the city results in a seven or eight million dollar Avalon tax base for future generations. So could you speak a little bit about that? I mean, 'cause that's very important to our city. The more, as we need to bring more firemen on, policemen on, and those type of things, we're gonna have sources. We can raise rates on utilities and things, or we can increase taxes, or we can be smart and, and make our city maximally utilize our properties. So is that in your, is that in your visionary sense that we would continue to try to do that?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, Mayor. As you know, I mean, this started a few years ago when myself, my, my department, the tax office, right, we were over there in the Dunn Building, and I asked Mike Everson, "Why are we here? This is a valuable piece of property in the middle of downtown, we need to probably not be here." And that started a whole motion, that started motion everything that we, how we are today. We created this, the website to, to market, based on recommendation, I think, from Alderman Odom, on how we, how we market our properties better. You know, we have hundreds of city property that we collect nothing on and more, we pay into to keep them maintained. So we've, we have the website that, that we've closed up forty, fifty properties, put them back on the tax roll again. As you said earlier, there's, there's only a few, the city's either growing or it's shrinking, really, to be honest, you never stay the same. And the only way to ensure that we have a viable tax base is to not own as much property as we do here in the city, and we own a lot of property. And as we put it back onto the tax rolls where people are paying taxes on it, that gives the board, and that, that gives us a lot more flexibility in doing the great things that we're doing in the city, the extra stuff, you know? It's one thing to have police and fire and maintain potholes and whatnot, but we need to do the extra things to make the quality of life in New Bern better. When people come here, they wanna come here, not because the streets are all paved and, you know, we have shiny new fire trucks, but it's the quality of life, it's a lot of things that go into it, it's the parks and it's the people, it's the whole transportation network. In order to do that, we need to expand our tax base. And again, absolutely, we've all been on, on that same page for a while now. And again, this project would be, I mean, I'm not sure, what's the estimate of the construction cost? Another twelve million dollars on the tax roll, that's incredible. I'm sure Mark knows what that, he's doing it right now. Mark knows how much money that is in the pot. So again, it goes all to building a better community.
I have a question. Some of the concerns from the Pembroke area, I'm not sure if it'll be directed to you, but to the team. I know one of their major concerns was they wanted to know that if the units were built, how would it affect the people that own homes and pay taxes? Would the, the value of their home decrease because this is erected into that area? We really couldn't get, get like, um...
Yeah, no, I can, I can just, well, I, it was a note that I put in my phone. And again, I really wanted to close with, I hear the Pembroke community, I understand what they're saying, I respect their opinion. I also am very confident that we can all work together to make sure that the project is a win-win for everybody. There's not a doubt in my mind, whether it's access, whether it's screening, there's a, there's a lot of different ways to make sure that this proposed project fits in the community and is a win-win for everybody. As far as the property values are concerned, there's really no way to really estimate that, but I'll tell you what, as one of the speakers said earlier, there was a six-hundred-thousand-dollar properties across the street from one of the projects. The project looks, you see what it looks like. It, it will most likely raise the value of the properties. Very, I can't imagine a situation where they would decrease them, it just doesn't happen. Not with a twelve million dollar investment.
Anything, any other questions, comments, comments from the board at this time on this item?
I'd like to ask a question of the city attorney. Mr. Davis, the process is same as anything else in the city. An offer is made, we decide to accept it or reject it, then it goes to a ten-day period, upset period?
No, ma'am, this will be different because the Housing Authority is a nonprofit entity, so the city could sign the contract and have a private sale without an upset bid process.
Without the upset bid process?
Yes, ma'am. Just like Habitat or anybody else that we do business with, it's a nonprofit.
Would we typically get the property appraised prior to that?
Generally, the city does, yes, ma'am.
Should.
Any other action at this time by the board of all of them on this item?
Mayor, I appreciate the time and the information that we've been provided. This was a much more palatable deal than the first one that was offered a couple of years ago. I, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Ruggeri said, and by the way, I remember never calling him to open in prayer because I didn't expect him to give us all that information, I was expecting a, a yes or no whether he was in favor or not, but I appreciate the information. And I do feel like it's our fiduciary duty to make sure that we're getting an equitable return on the taxpayer's dollar. And it's not about making money off the Housing Authority, it's about making sure that another developer doesn't come up to us two or three years from now and say, "I would give you a million dollars for that property, it's probably not worth that." But I feel like if we're gonna move forward, which I feel like should, we need to, to have an appraised value of the property.
Okay, is that in form of a motion, or do you, do you wanna give direction to your manager to do that? Is, is, anybody have any problem with the direction to city manager to get an appraisal done on the property?
I don't agree.
You don't? Okay, let's, um, let's get a...
I'm making a motion that we direct staff to ask for an appraisal on the property.
I don't have a problem with getting, well, somebody needs to second it, but I don't have a problem with at least getting an appraisal.
I'll second it. Motion by Alderman, Odom, seconded by Alderman Astor. At this time, I'm just going to ask for a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
No.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Okay, any other action at this time? Let's go to item number eight, Mr. Stevens.
Mayor, items eight and nine are the two that need to be pulled.
Yes, sir.
With regards to the public hearing, we will have those at our first meeting in office.
Let's go to item number ten, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board, as we do every single year.
Do you wanna wait for it till, so we can hear you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the tax collector for the county who we use to collect our taxes for the city issues us a settlement statement of property taxes for the city. Item number ten is the submission of this annual settlement for tax year two thousand seventeen. Just to go through the numbers real quick, this revealed that there was a total two thousand seventeen amended tax levy of thirteen million, one hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars, twenty-two cents. And as of June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, ninety-nine point three-three percent of that had been collected. Remaining delinquent amount as of that date was eighty-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars, twenty-five cents. And I will say that that is a very strong rate of collection and very happy to see that. And that continues year to year that we see that collection rate. In addition, the two thousand seventeen amended tax levy for the Municipal Service District was one hundred ninety-three thousand, fifty-seven, or fifty-two cent. The collection rate of that was ninety-nine point six-seven percent with a remaining delinquent amount as of June thirtieth, six hundred and thirty-two dollars, forty-six cents. So we're requesting that the board accept this settlement statement for its submission and will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Board have questions?
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Stevens, what was the collection rate last year?
I don't have that in front of me, I have...
If you would bear with me, Alderman Best, I will pull it up here in just one moment.
Thank you.
The citywide collection rate last year was ninety-nine point two-six percent.
Yes, uh, what, not the, the NV one or regular tax?
I'm sorry?
That was your total?
Yeah, uh, excuse me, that's, that's, that's the citywide collection rate for the previous year.
Any other, any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept, assuming we're just accepting the submission of tax collector's annual settlement for tax year two thousand seventeen. Second.
Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Harris. Is there further discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Item number eleven, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number eleven is a consideration of a resolution approving a conservation easement at Martin Marietta Park. As we have been moving forward with our master plan for the Martin Marietta Park land, we discovered that there was some restrictions and covenants, in the covenants that would greatly restrict our ability to put in some of the amenities that we were looking to do around the property. Basically, the conservation easement that was drafted up back some years ago, whenever the city sought a very large sum of money in a grant, the conservation easements kind of came along with that. It primarily covered about seven hundred and twenty or seven hundred and thirty-some acres of the total site, and it would have restricted us from doing things such as fishing piers, gazebos, beaches, things like that. So in doing so, we're looking at a piece of property that we have, that the city owns, it's eight point two acres, to use as a offset for allowing us to do more stuff within those conservation easements. And eight point two acres at that point will have similar restrictions as what we will be able to do with the revised restrictions on the Martin Marietta Park land. The site, the eight point two acres, is fairly adjacent, fairly close to the property of Martin Marietta Park land, over close to where our nine-one-one telecommunications center used to be, and it is probably about ninety percent wetland and marsh area. So we are looking to get the board to approve this and adopt a resolution approving this conservation easement at Martin Marietta Park. It has been approved in concept by the Clean Water Management Trust Fund and assuming that the board wishes to move forward with this. We as staff recommend that this be approved, this will allow us to do a lot more on the market.
Are we gonna run into this on other parts of the master plan, or is this, is this the only time we're gonna run into this?
This, this will take care of all of it on the entire piece of property as far as any kind of allowances for us to do within this conservation area. And majority of it follows the, the shorelines of the three large lakes that we have out there.
Support, any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the board consider adopting the resolution approving a conservation easement at Martin Marietta Park.
Second.
Motion, Alderman Best, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number twelve, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number twelve is adopting a resolution accepting ownership and maintenance of certain streets within Hardy Farms subdivision. Thomas Engineering has requested that the city accept this ownership for these streets being Betty Gresham Lane, Ella Sophia Lane, Hardy Farms Drive, Left Ring House Lane, Lefty Court, Tessie Trail, and Weathersby Drive. These streets are located in Phase One of the Hardy Farms subdivision. We have inspected that, staff has inspected the streets, they do comply with our street standards and we're recommending approval.
Board have questions? I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution accepting ownership and maintenance of the stated streets in the Hardy Farms subdivision.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Astor, seconded by Alderman Harris, is there discussion? I have just one question. The road that was supposed to be developed out of Hardy Farms back to Old Airport Road, is that, am I in the right subdivision?
You are.
Yeah, Betty Gresham.
Betty Gresham, but there was a stipulation that they could build the amount of lots that they developed, but any further development of lots within the Hardy Farms subdivision would require that connection. I know that at that time, I think there was some, they didn't come to terms, I guess, on the additional acreage between who owns it now and who was looking to develop it, so therefore, the Betty Gresham Lane at this time will not be developed.
I have a...
But any further development of lots would require that.
Okay.
This question will be for Attorney Scott. After we approve this, how long before it's down at City Hall, just in case there may be transaction, real estate transactions where it was private and now it's public and that's needed for closing, how long before the documents will be available to say that we, the city, maintain the roads now? How long does it take to?
Yeah. Matt certified their specifications. Well, tonight, when, when, when the mayor signs the acceptance, the city will have officially accepted, so there's a plat on record that shows that public street, and then tonight, the board is accepting that public street.
Okay.
And that'll be that.
Perfect, okay.
No deed transfer to any of that grand stuff.
Any other questions? Roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey? Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number thirteen, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. By agreement, dated January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, Department of Transportation agreed to abandon certain streets on Old Airport Road. We have briefed y'all on this before and the city at that time would accept ownership upon their abandonment. That has occurred at the July two thousand eighteen meeting and at this time, before you tonight, is a resolution accepting ownership and maintenance of certain sections of Old Airport Road.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution accepting ownership and maintenance, oh, excuse me, adopt a resolution or ordinance amended, which, where are we at?
Thirteen.
I lost my, sorry.
Item 13.
Thirteen, I was right the first time. Adopt a resolution accepting ownership and maintenance of certain sections of Old Airport Road.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Astor, seconded by Alderman Harris. Is there discussion?
Yes, when will we start work?
I'll give you two quick updates, real quick, on Betty Gresham first. The developer did reach out to me, and they are actually working on the preliminary plans for the second phase. And he has reached out to me about the extension of Betty Gresham to Old Airport Road, just to make sure their plans were going to align with ours for Old Airport Road.
Wonderful.
As a follow-up for Old Airport Road, about two weeks ago, we did receive the twenty-five percent drawings from the engineer that we are consulting with. That was basically for alignment purposes. We have reviewed them, sent them back the one comment that we did have, and they are now proceeding on with the next part of the design, which is the drainage and the grading and everything else that go along with it. So we're still anticipating spring, summer of next year for construction, but we are proceeding on, and we have made progress and received the twenty-five percent drawings as scheduled.
Great, thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
When will we receive the funding from DOT?
Now that it has been approved and accepted, we should get the check as soon as they cut it. I mean, I'm not sure of the timeframe, but they can now release the funds now.
Because we accepted Trent Road how many years ago?
I understand that.
And DOT still hasn't made payment on what they owe us, correct?
I think that's center, the center section of paving is correct, but Old Airport Road, they can't release it now that the agreement has been signed and we've accepted it.
Okay, thank you. You going to call them tomorrow morning, tell them to send it?
That's right.
Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey? Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 14, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a adopting an ordinance, amending Chapter 70, traffic and vehicles of the Code of Ordinances. And I'm going to turn this over to Matt so that he can kind of brief y'all on a lot of these changes, as well as, I think he has some individuals who's helped him throughout this process, and wanted to make sure and recognize them.
Thanks, Mark. Mayor, what of Alderman? At this time, just as a quick introduction to the next three items on the agenda, I wanted to give an introduction. A couple, probably about a year and a half, two years ago, I sat in the Assistant City Manager's office with the police chief, and at that time, we recognized the need to update our signed ordinance. We realized at that time, there were many streets that had speed limits or that we had accepted where the speed limits and the stop signs weren't covered in our ordinance. So at that time, we decided that we needed to update the ordinance. We looked at it this year, and we decided that we would bring in some summertime help to assist us with that. So at that time, at this time, what I would like to do is recognize the two individuals that were here with us for the summer, tell you the scope of the project they worked on, and the end result is the next three agenda items that you have in front of you. So, real quick, if you guys would come up, the first one is Mr. James Vincent. James Vincent is a rising senior at UNC Pembroke. He is a computer science major. He started working with the city on May 6th, and his last day with the city will be this Friday, as he returns back to college. The second one is Kim Barkhurst. She is from Havelock, and she has actually served as a seasonal employee with the city for the last year in the Administration Division, Public Works Division, and now in the Parks and Recreation Division. When these two individuals came on back in May, I gave them the goal to update the ordinance for everything that has been accepted as a city street since 2010. Working with Mr. Davis, we recognized that it's been since 2010 since the ordinance was truly updated at all. So I gave them a list of all, everything that has been accepted since 2010, and gave them the job to go out to those locations, identify all the stop signs, all the speed limit signs, all the yield signs, traffic signals, and then provide me with a list of streets that needed to be added or deleted to the ordinance, and they had 12 weeks to do it. Surprising to me, they completed that work in about two weeks. So at that point, we made the decision that I would assign them to do a complete audit of the entire section of the ordinance, and they were to travel the entire 175 miles of city streets. They were to locate every stop sign, speed limit sign, yield sign, traffic signal light, and they were to compare what was in the field with what was actually in the ordinance. And from there, they would provide me with a list of things that need to be added to the ordinance and things that need to be deleted from the ordinance. Along the way, they found many things. Over the past 30 years, probably 50% of the yield signs that are in our current ordinance have now been turned into stop signs. Stop signs have been added for new subdivisions and new streets, and a lot of name changes. I'm sure everybody in this room realizes that Martin Luther King used to be Clarendon Boulevard. Our ordinance still refers to every intersection as Clarendon Boulevard. South Front Street used to be called Triumph Palace Road. Our ordinance refers to every intersection as Triumph Palace Road. So they spent the next, I gave them 10 weeks to complete, and they completed it in four. Overall, they came back to me, and we went back and forth, back and forth. I sent them back in the field several times, and at the end of the project, there are 950 either additions or deletions to the Code of Ordinance for signs. So I felt it was appropriate to recognize these guys. The work they did was appreciated and needed. The only other thing I will say is the fact that they did everything we needed to be done in six weeks. I had them for 12. So James has actually spent the last six weeks working in our IT department, and Kim has spent the last six weeks working in our Parks and Recreation Department. So that being said, as Mark introduced, we have the next three items on the agenda, and they are all changed as a result of the work they did over the past 12 weeks.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Can we approve all three of these in one motion?
No, sir, let's just take them off individually. It'll go quick.
Mayor, just one question for Ms. Montane. What, I assume with all that work that they've put in, we've got a better process in place now to fix this on a more frequent basis?
And it's exactly what you're seeing tonight. We have just now accepted Hardy Farms roads as a street, and the ordinance changes you're about to adopt next will include the Hardy Farms subdivision. So as we move forward, as we accept the streets in the subdivision for acceptance, we'll follow that right back up with an ordinance amendment to place stop signs and speed limit signs.
Great, thank you.
We have questions on item 14?
Mayor, if not, I'd like to make a motion we adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 70, traffic and vehicles of the Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Kinsey. Is there discussion? CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw? Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 15.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15 is the resolution to adopt a schedule of stop intersections as defined in Section 70-99 of the Code of Ordinances, as Matt has kind of indicated.
Mayor, if there's no questions, I would like to make a motion adopting a resolution to adopt a schedule of stop intersections as defined in Section 70-99 of the Code of Ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Harris, seconded by Alderman Kinsey. Is there discussion?
Yes, just a comment. Because I'm working on something for the Gettys neighborhood, I want them to know it is not included. We are, we will be putting stop signs on Park Avenue to help some of the traffic flow and concerns of the residents of Gettys. It was not, we couldn't get it in time to do this, but now the process is going to be so easy that on our next agenda, we can easily update it and amend this. So I don't want anybody to think it's included in this. We're still working on it. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, item number 16, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, and this is the last item that Matt indicated when he was speaking. This is a resolution to adopt a schedule of maximum speed limits as defined in Section 70-132 through 70-135 of the Code of Ordinances. We have those streets specifically listed based on the miles per hour, 25, 35, 45, 55, and so on.
Any question?
Not really a question. It's a statement. My heart is kind of heavy that Highway 55 couldn't be included in this. I do know it's part of, it's the state highway, but I hope we will be working on that and get that resolved.
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Thank you.
Still working on it.
Mayor, if there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting a resolution to adopt a schedule of maximum speed limits as defined in Section 70-132 through 70-135 of the Code of Ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Harris, seconded by Alderman Astor. Is there discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 17, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor and Mr. Board. Last item tonight is a consideration of a budget ordinance amendment for the FY 2018-19 Grants Fund operating budget. The Police Department was awarded a grant an amount of $11,293 from the Department of Justice, and we are looking to, no matching funds, or no matching funds required, but the budget ordinance that we're doing tonight simply now just received the grant. Happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Board have questions?
What's the grant for?
It is used towards purchasing fitness equipment and renovating the department's fitness rooms for the police department.
Great. I make a motion that we adopt a budget ordinance amending amendment for the FY 2018-19 Grants Fund operating budget.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Astor, seconded by Alderman Bingle. Is there discussion? CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have appointments, starting with Alderman Odom?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Kinsey?
None, sir.
Alderman Astor?
None tonight.
Alderman Harris?
No.
Alderman Bingle?
None.
Okay, attorney's report?
Nothing reported tonight, Mayor.
City manager's report?
I have nothing additional to report, sir.
New business, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Okay, several things. One, I do want to announce the school supplies drive for the utility office, which they do a great job, and they're asking the donation, the drive is on now through the 23rd of August, donate school supplies at the utility business office to benefit a local elementary school. You can like them on Facebook. All you have to do is search the City of New Bern Department of Public Utilities, comment the name of the elementary school on the post at the top of the Facebook page that you would like to receive the donated supplies. So if everybody wants to participate, kudos to our utility business office for doing that. It's really great, and I just told them I would give them a shout-out for that. You know, Charlie hadn't picked on me yet, so I did not pick it. I had somebody contact me about the very nice, well-done flyer that was included in their utility bill, and they asked me who produced that and who paid for that, because it was, you know, a very expensive type piece. I thought it might have been done by Electric Cities, but I wasn't sure. Can you answer that question? Or you can tell me that. Okay, sorry, I didn't pick on you. JR is going to tell me.
Alderman Bingle, yes, ma'am, that is actually done and produced by the utility business office. Our staff over there puts that together and provides the documentation and feedback. They reach out to me for document, for information that I would like to see in there as well. And now that Charlie's on board, they'll be reaching out to him as well. He and I both reviewed that prior to it's, prior to calling out. It's also paid for out of the UBO budget.
So we pay for that. Very glossy, very, I mean, is it really expensive? Because somebody was very concerned that, here we are with high utility bills, and if this is something that costs, is costing a lot of money, they had concerns. I'm just repeating what a citizen has expressed to me.
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's only, it's only, it is a few thousand dollars for, for to go out, I believe it's like $3,000 for the entire city. We send that out as an information packet three times, three or four times a year.
Okay. I'd like to see that in the budget line item that I didn't see at the last budget. I don't know if it's divided out, but I think it would be interesting.
It was in the detailed list, but I can point that out to you.
Okay. And then the last thing I need to discuss is ADA compliance and pedestrian safety. As you know, I aggravated this board for a while to try to get a disabilities committee together. I did get the committee together. I do see, well, I saw Jerry Havens here, he's on that committee. And we did have one meeting, and we decided we need to, you know, further investigate some things. And we were supposed to meet in June, and my bad with everything that's been going on, having been able to call the meeting together again. In the meantime, there's been a group of individuals that is working with Sergeant Bowen, I believe, and the Police Department about the watch for me and the traffic calming so he could get across the street. What has happened is that we're not meeting the needs of the disability community, and they are calling me and talking to me. And what I need to do is really just set this disability committee on go and not expect me to be there because my schedule makes it difficult sometimes. What they're concerned about, again, is they are asking for audible signals, at least on one crosswalk in downtown New Bern. So, you know, across Broad Street at either Hancock Street or at Craven Street. An audible would be for someone who's blind, and they come to the crosswalk, and they're trying to get across the street, the audible sound tells them it's safe. Now, with that being said, they cost about $10,000 per pole, and per intersection you'd need four, which would be $40,000. So I've asked the city manager today, I had some conversation with it. I want this board to know to look in under, I guess, street improvements. We might have some money in there to look and see if we could at least try to get one of those streets as part of this. I'd like to ask that we would put that into place to look, to see if we could do that. And then we really have to develop a comprehensive pedestrian ADA strategic plan to include other intersections in the downtown and the Five Points area. We need this all along our city, even going out to the hospital. We have many people that walk out that way, and we want to make sure it's safe. The last thing we must address, and Mr. Ruggieri, is he still here? Oh, there he is. I know you're in charge of the accessibility plan for the City of New Bern. Is that correct? No? Okay, okay. I thought the ADA plan was under your peruse. Okay. Anyway, I continue to get calls and concerns about the absence of an elevator in a rampant City Hall, so that all citizens can get access to this fabulous building. We, the city really, we need to go ahead and update our plan and do this, so I'm urging staff to please make this a priority. I'm going to get the disability committee together again, but in everything we do, let's have a written plan that we can pass out to our citizens, let them know what we're doing. The law requires that we have a plan. We might not be able to put an elevator or a ramp in this time, but we have to have a written plan. It needs to be updated. We had one some years ago. It needs to be updated so that we are in compliance, which I think, we do have a way to get somebody in here. I don't know if we've checked on the written plan, but we really need to do that. And my commitment to the citizens and to this board is, in 2019, I'm going to take on the project of looking and seeing what we can do to get this building in better, in a better way for an elevator, whatever. So, because I aggravated you enough this year about parking and urban development, I'm going to get you on City Hall next year. So I just think it's really important, and Mr. Stevens, if you would help me follow up on that and make sure we're continuing to work on that, I would greatly appreciate that, because it's an important segment of our community. You know, Brandon, Brendan Hilde is such a fabulous young man. He's the one that created the moving, the accessible icon, wheelchair icon, and goes all across our state, has been honored, and he can't get in City Hall by himself. It requires somebody, a parent, somebody to get him into City Hall. And it's distressing to him because he wants to be involved and engaged, so we need, we need to work towards that. So that's my new business. Sorry.
No problem. Any other new business tonight?
Mr. Mayor, first, I just want to give a shout-out to the Boots and Badges Blood Drive. It was an amazing event, although the boots did not
It was an amazing event, although the boots did not take home the victory, I just thought it was great, and I know that I got a lot of individuals that inbox me and say that it's something that we should continue to do because it just brings the community together. Just a few things this weekend that's going on because I'm out in the community. This will be the fourth annual African American, African American Male Summit at the Riverfront Convention Center. That's going to be July twenty-eighth, and that's going to be from nine to three, so come out, anyone is welcome to come, men, women, it's great for the community. That same day, July twenty-eighth, from three to seven, there's going to be a Q Unity Fish Fry over at the Omega Center. Like I've been saying for a while, they are under new management, or someone from their organization has taken over, they've remodeled and they're rebranding, so come out, support the neighborhood. That's going to be a great time for fellowship. And then also on that same day at the Omega Center, on July twenty, from eleven AM to three PM, there is going to be a Clean Slate Clinic where individuals that may have tarnished records, they have a chance to get expunged, and then also if you have issues with your driving record, there were slots available for individuals to be able to come and try and get that rectified as too. So there's a lot of events going on in the community. Sit. Oh, I can't hear you. Oh, yes, Footloose on the Noose on the twenty-sixth. We're going to pray that there is no rain, knock on wood, but Footloose on the Noose, I forgot who the band was going to be, Mr. Foster, who is it?
Party Parrot.
Party Parrot? Okay, so, it's going to be exciting. I love them, so please come out and support Footloose on the Noose. It's free to everyone, and we have different vendors set up, so you know, if you want food, obviously you have to pay for that, but to come and be out there with your tins, whatever you got, to listen to the music, it's free. All right, that's all I got for you.
What's the times on the youth summit again?
Okay, the youth summit is nine to three o'clock.
And then later?
Omega, for both of them. The first event with the Clean Slate Clinic is eleven to three, and then, I mean, that's with Corey Purdy and Washoe Unemployment, and then that afternoon, three to seven, is going to be the fish fry.
Three to seven?
Yes.
Like so. Any other new business?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
I want to direct this to Mr. Stevens. A while back, I talked with you in reference to a street within the Pleasant Hill community, a gravel street, and I just want to know what requirements need to be met in order for the city to take, to adopt that street and maintain that street, like you're doing over in the Hardy Farms subdivision. I know it has to be a subdivision, and I know there's residents that live back there.
Basically, if, in a nutshell, the road has to be constructed to the city's standards in order for that street to be accepted. So the city has not been in a, I guess, act of building streets. Normally, that is upon the developers, it's upon homeowners who front a specific gravel road or whatever it may be to take on their proportionate share of whatever that cost is. We had a very similar situation to where there was an unimproved street over in, off of National Avenue, the Housing, not Housing, but the Habitat for Humanity wanted to build a home on, and they had to extend the street to our standards in order for them to be able to do that. So in a nutshell, that's basically what it is.
Okay.
And I'm happy to, if you want to get with me and take a look at that particular location, happy to talk with you about it.
Well, because it's, it's west, I mean, it's East Pleasant Hill Drive, which goes around, but then there's a, like a gravel road that turns off, and there's like five